Let's call the Village of Weston Board of Trustees meeting to order. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody.
So if you came on earlier, the public comment, if you have a public comment on the fire fee, we'll address that at number thirty-six. But if you have something else that's not on the agenda that you'd like to have a public comment about, I don't have nothing up here. But if you, does anybody have anything other than the fire fee? Yep. Did you submit something to the clerk?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not fire fee, right? Okay. So name and address for the record, please.
Cindy Russell.
I'm sorry, whoa, 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 I forgot something. We'll call. Wow. Sorry about that. I just wanted to get everything moving, so. Be right with you then, Cindy.
Maloney.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Lobzareau. Jordan. Zagami.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. With the financial shortage.
Just your name and record for, or, sorry, I don't think we got to that.
Fifty-nine, Cindy Russell, fifty-nine zero seven, Tricia Avenue.
Thank you.
With the financial shortage for Safer and the declining ISO rating facing Weston taxpayers, Weston's newsletter polling question of your favorite condiment diverts attention from the pressing issue, fire issue, and fails to engage the community with the input. The taxpayers feel there needs to be more transparency and communication before crisis situations develop due to fiscal irresponsibility. Taxpayers should have input and funding of capital projects. This funding impacts essential services to the taxpayers and/or increase the taxes or fees. I think the newsletter could serve a much better premise in getting input from the community and what the board is planning to do. And not only pulling the community, but also publishing those the poll survey results for the community as well as just being used internally as far as what the public feels the board's doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Today, earlier today, we received a letter, two letters from residents, one from Gail Marshall and one from Eric Lemron. Both village residents. You all received those this morning. You all have those in front of you. I'm going to ask that we submit those into the record. And, okay. All right, let's see, minutes from previous meetings, number four, approval of July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Board of Trustees meeting, what's your pleasure? Motion to approve by Ermeling. Second by Zagami. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Let's see, if you, if I'd like to just ask the board, could we move thirty-six up? Okay. So let's move thirty-six up right now at this time. And thirty-six is discussion and/or action on potential implementation of an annual fire fee. And for those that may not have been here for the last meeting, the HR and Finance Committee has moved that discussion to the next meeting. And I, I'm not sure what this board is going to do on that. But the potential that the chief said is that we may have a decision on the Safer Grant. And, but if we did, we'd have fourteen days to respond. I mean, we could certainly get committees or the board together. So if we want to move to thirty-six and people want to speak on the fire fee. All right, I'll start. Yep, go ahead, just state your name and, and there's a sign-in sheet there too, if you could, please. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Justin Clermore, thirty-two oh five, Bruce Dryer. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the public for attending tonight to show up to participate. It's a civic duty. Too few of us, myself included, engage in regularly enough. Maybe that's part of the problem here. I'd also like to thank the members of the board for your service. Some of you have been doing this a very long time, and I appreciate your dedication. But frankly, the decades of experience represented on this board just makes this fire tax situation all more frustrating. And yes, I know you have to call it a fee, but I'm going to call it what it is, and that's a tax. Municipal finance is a complex and nuanced discipline. I recognize the challenges involved in balancing the myriad funding mechanisms, spending restrictions, deadlines, guidelines, and bylaws that dictate how you go about collecting and expending taxpayer dollars. Planning months, years, or decades in advance is a daunting task, and you've got sixteen thousand different people to keep happy. So I get it, it's tough. But frankly, that's what we pay you guys to do. In fact, it's the fundamental aspect of what we pay you guys to do. It's the job you voluntarily and admirably signed up for, and we don't really ask you to do much else. The fact is that every dime you spend on anything, from this beautiful facility to silly little signs overpriced on the Schofield Avenue that ask us to pardon the mess, every red cent of it is taxpayer money. Whether you get it from the county, the state, the feds, or directly from us. And given the copious capital always we've seen in this village currently in over the last decade plus, the idea that somehow we suddenly don't have enough of it left to provide a standard municipal service like fire protection is unsettling, frustrating, and disappointing. I'm told that Safer is a highly efficient operation, and I believe that. Yet somehow, we still can't afford it within the existing tax rate. As trustee Cronin pointed out in his recent op-ed, properly funding public safety is not an option, it's a must. Yet somehow, this critical funding apparently hasn't been among the board's list of top priorities. And now we're up against it. Pay this new additional tax, or we might not be able to protect your home or business from a fire. Seriously? At this point, this fire tax conundrum appears to be a direct indicator of some combination of gross oversight, incompetence, or even malfeasance. Since you give us only three minutes each to address critical topics in this forum, I'll move on to another disconcerting aspect of this debacle. At one point, there was a unanimous motion to put this tax referendum, to give we the people a voice on it. That never happened, and nobody has been able to point to when, where, or by whom that decision was made to scuttle the referendum. I understand that a later decision was made to research this tax as an alternative. But by that point in time, it was too late to get a ballot, a referendum on the ballot regardless. The ship had sailed. All conjecture and media squabbling aside, it's becoming clear that this decision was made outside of regular order in an effort to help this board save face in the ways, in the ways of this fiscal mismanagement. Now, I don't know enough to sit here and point fingers at any individuals, so I'm not going to. But we're in a time where transparency and accountability in government are high demand. I don't think we as taxpayers are getting nearly enough either when it comes to this fire tax. So I'm here to demand that the board be more transparent about how we got to this point, to be accountable for the errors and misguides of this funding shortfall. And however this whole thing shakes out in the end, I hope this serves as a wake-up call for this and future administrations to better prioritize spending decisions and put more emphasis on the services that really matter to the citizens.
Anyone else?
Hey, Guy Friddell, twenty-two forty, Ruby Drive, Chrono Water. Although I spend enough time at Montku Estates that sometimes I think I live there. I'm here on behalf of Montku Estates, the property that my wife Nancy and I are, are my investors in. Been a labor of love for fourteen years. Actually eighteen, if you count the four years it took us to get financed. Our property does not get the same benefit that other properties would from this fire fee. We have a sprinkler system throughout the property, including our decks. So we have a lot of square footage, but we don't get the benefit that a property that does not have a sprinkler system would get from having a quicker response, a fuller response. I also want to point out that even though the amount that our property would be, would have to pay under preliminary estimate of seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-seven cents, doesn't sound like a lot. When you put it in the context of some of the things that we've had to deal with over the last year, we have to scrap for every dollar, and my wife certainly does. Our real estate taxes went up about thirty percent, fourteen thousand and six hundred dollars. Our insurance, we got a new feature on that within the last month. We learned what a one percent deductible is as far as wind and fire damage. It's one percent of the replacement cost of the building. Our replacement cost is roughly twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars. So if we have a fire or wind loss, we're going to be paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar deduction. So we have to provide for that month. Then I'm looking forward to win our low-interest loan at three and a quarter percent when that comes to in about a year and a half. If we had to refinance right now, our interest rate would probably double. It's something like six and a half to six and three-quarters percent. We don't know, or when you put it in the context, you've got all of these expenses plus all of the other expenses that, that we and the taxpayers are facing. You know, we are not in a situation where we have boatloads of money to keep shelling it out. We're in a situation where we have to pay attention to every dime that we spend. So I'm asking, you know, you to give some consideration to the fact that we don't get the same benefit and the context that we're in right now where we're facing a lot of abnormal expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Guy, did you sign in on the sheet? Just make sure, Guy, if you didn't sign in on the sheet, if you'd sign in on the sheet.
I did sign in.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else? Jim?
Sure. I would ask for an exemption then in three minutes because as it reads and as the board approved that that three minutes is only for a non-agenda item, and since this is an agenda item, I would ask that you do not interrupt the chat for three minutes, if that's okay.
What's your estimate?
Not quite seat six. Thank you. Jim Hudson, five thousand two Arrow Street. First off, thank you to each and every one of you who is attending here in person and virtually. I count thirty pairs of cheeks and seats, and the last time there were this many people at a regular meeting was when this board changed the name of Schofield Avenue to D.C. Rivers Boulevard. It took a position signed by about fifty property owners along the roadway and about thirty people attending in person to get that aim back in the right direction and reverse a terrible decision made by the board. In fact, many of those board members are still sitting at the table making poor decisions which do not represent the best interests of the sixteen thousand residents of the village. The proposed fire tax, which is to be decided upon tonight, should be tabled immediately. There was action taken by this board to allow the residents of Weston to decide how they want their tax dollars to be spent. The board voted on unanimously to exceed the tax levy limits to be a referendum question on the spring twenty-twenty-five ballot. It also asked for options at the same time to see what a proposed fire tax could look like to be presented in February of twenty-five. In the April of twenty-five, referendum was never on a single ballot. Why is that? Jamie, were you too busy making Facebook posts or supporting your preferred candidate for president? You openly admitted to the Wasonian when asked about this. Your response was, "The conversation," and I quote, "The conversation has just been evolving all this time," end quote. Yet there was no mention of any conversation or discussion in any meeting minutes or agenda, which flushes out my continued statements that conversations and actions by the board are taking place outside this boardroom. Mark, were you too concerned about your own reelection to get this on the ballot? Vice President Cronin, were you too busy attacking me on social media to take action and care? Please explain to us why. I sat on the board that time, and I didn't even know that it was not going to be on the ballot. I thought it was. I voted for the referendum to be on the ballot, and surprise, it wasn't. Any reasonable individual would agree that there is more at play here. This was done by design because now the only options available are to implement this blank check fire tax or to not adequately fund the fire department. I say blank check because this estimated fifty-dollar tax will mathematically at least triple in year three when the federal grant expires. And the cost of doing business, health insurance, fuel, new fire hoses, none of that cost will get less as time moves on. So this fire tax is literally a blank check for any amount to be charged in addition to your property tax bill for an indefinite amount of time. Those are facts. I am one hundred percent in support of our hard-working firefighters and policemen and women. They need resources and monies allocated to their departments to do their jobs effectively. Unfortunately, this board, under the leadership of Mark Maloney, continues to make decisions to spend money and write checks. Then when it comes time to pay for the fire department, one of the very few services our property taxes really need to support, there's no money left. We're sitting in a building which costs over fifteen million dollars to build. That does not include the extraordinary additional costs to carry that fifteen million dollar debt and the additional cost to repair and maintain this larger facility. Kennedy Park is in the midst of a fifteen million dollar overhaul. We found a way to justify borrowing millions of dollars and paying interest on the debt, but we can't afford to fund the fire department. Please make it make sense. I would almost guarantee that we will not get a real answer tonight on why this topic of a referendum was not on the spring twenty-twenty-five ballot. Maloney, Cronin, Gaber, and the gang will just smirk and roll their eyes again at the one-eyed mechanic in the room making waves by asking hard questions. This is the exact reason I resigned from the board. It is a toxic good old boys environment where facts do not matter. Predetermined outcomes and discussions outside the boardroom are how business is done here. And if you attempt to sneak a peek into how the sausage is made and request public records relating to that matter, well, first they'll delay, then they'll demand a one-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ransom money payment upfront before you can see the records. And then two months later, you'll be presented with pages of screenshots, not files in their native format, which are low resolution, have dates and timestamps missing, most all of which are so unlawfully overredacted that they are completely useless. To top all that off, they wasted over two thousand of our taxpayer dollars to consult with the village attorney about releasing these documents, which belong to the people, us, as a matter of public record. So Mark, if you care to speak to the topic of transparency, I would say this is a great place to start talking about how you have no interest in it. All I'm asking is that all of you here do the job that you were elected or appointed to do and simply represent the best interests of sixteen thousand hard-working citizens in the Village of Weston. Do what's right, not what's easily. Finally, to those of you here in the audience, I would ask that each and every one of you who is, who wants funding for public safety to go to referendum and not be a decision made by six in lieu of a fire tax, please stand.
Well, the record reflects, there are three people sitting out of thirty. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Jamie Boylan, seven thousand and ten, Mill Street. On August sixth, I emailed the administrator, Gaber, after the fire fee meeting, suggesting a referendum so the public could wait and film response. Nine months later, this issue still hasn't returned to the agenda. We missed the spring twenty-twenty-five ballot. The referendum language would have needed to be submitted well before the February, well before February to appear on the April ballot. State law requires approval at least seventy days before the election. So by February, it was already too late, effectively deciding against a referendum through inaction. Failing to put the referendum on the spring twenty-twenty-five ballot, denying taxpayers a voice and how this issue unfolds and how their money is spent and how the fire department is funded, this leaves only two options. Underfund the fire department or force a new fire tax on everyone. A tax projected to increase over the next four years, not including ongoing yearly cost increases. Weston residents believe a referendum was coming. Now the department faces losing critical grant funding. Any further delays puts the village in a difficult position caused by inaction from the administrator and the president. This isn't just oversight, it's a failure of leadership. The administrator and the president meet on a regular basis, but nothing was shared with the board or the public. The silence erodes transparency, accountability, and trust. The residents of Weston deserve openness, accountability, and a real say in decisions affecting their money and services. I urge the boards to act immediately to restore public trust and give the residents the voice they were promised.
Lisa Buck, eighteen oh eight, Porters Lane. Didn't write anything as horrible as everybody else, but they pretty much covered it. Uh, I'm a mom. Four kids, a background in healthcare. My husband's a teacher. So we very well know the service industry and, you know, how important it is. I don't think anybody likes taxes or fees. I don't care what you call it. It's a tax, it's a fee, same thing. Yeah, I'll get it, expenses go up. I think my husband and I are both concerned. If everything is supposed to be transparent, right? We assume you guys all know what you're doing. I don't have to go to all the meetings. We're going to see it in a bulletin. We're going to read about it. If this was voted on, then it's going to be put to the public where the public gets to vote, the sixteen thousand people that we have here to vote. I guess I'm wondering why that wasn't done. I guess that's my main concern, is it's not transparent to all those that want to have an opinion and vote on something. You're going to vote and it's all sunk down. Uh, you know, are there other funding ways that we can come up? And I know that you guys have probably talked about this in some of your meetings, but as a mom, I have to budget every single dollar. Every dollar that I make, I know exactly where it goes. So if we have an up-and-coming expense, right, in our household, we have to either take the money away from something else or work towards saving up for the future. So I don't get why all of these taxes have to keep falling on us and our home. Our poverty taxes just went up, and now we're going to have this fire tax? I know very well that the fire tax is not going to go away. If we need X amount of people or X services, and I get that people get burnt out, we are people, that fire tax is never going to go away. It's always going to be there, and it's just going to keep going up and up and up and up. This is not a tax we're just going to see from year to year. So I, I think that this is going to be something for the future where people are going to keep complaining and people, keep people, keep having concerns that are bringing businesses to counteract this. You know, I know we talk about the grant. Is the grant going to come up? Are we going to all of a sudden have a meeting and say, hey, the grant didn't come up? And everybody, you know, has this fire tax that we're going to have to pay? I just don't think any of this is transparent to the people that are paying the taxes. So, and you're going to do what you're going to do, it doesn't matter what we all say. But I, I think you need to reconsider. That's it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Barbara Margigal, seven hundred and one, Cometic Street. Are you able to answer questions or is it comment only?
Comment only, I believe, yeah.
Um, well, if you go to page two hundred and thirty-nine and two hundred and forty, I was looking at the examples that were given. Uh, so on page two hundred and thirty-nine, example one, the residential owner's information is incorrect. A fifty-two oh eight should be forty-one sixty-six. And the residential owner, number two, should be forty-eight sixty-six. Um, and the tax exempt numbers, I don't know why on both example one and example two are almost fifty percent lower than what the numbers would normally show. So I'm not sure. I didn't see anywhere in any of the further information that shows as to why tax exempts pay not based on the actual square footage that's shown. Uh, and as a side note, residential is spelled incorrectly on both of those pages as well. So I would like confirmation that these examples shown from multiple times, it was said that we'd be paying fifty dollars. I would like to know for confirmation, does that fifty dollars start with year one or is that year four? So for example, if you can see the residential owner one with the fifty-two oh eight, which would actually be the uh, forty-one sixty-six, does that in year four then go to a hundred and nineteen dollars? Or in year one, are they starting with fourteen fifty-eight and have year four be to forty-one sixty-six? If it goes to a hundred and nineteen dollars, I would ask that the, that the village would instead of putting a hundred percent of those fees towards taxpayers, at least set a limit. Say for instance, we max out at that sixty-five percent, which would be put at seventy-seven dollars, and the village could then pay the remainder. It would at least give the village an opportunity to pay attention to how much we are having to pay and to make sure that that's actually in the budget and can't be put to extremes. Um, my other concern with these examples, one and example two, is that the total fees collected seem rather arbitrary. Seems unusual to me to have these numbers not matching a budget. You'd think that you would have a total value amount that you would need and then be able to match the square footage to be able to find your budget. Um, so if something like this is to be proposed, I would like to know what happens to the difference of that money? Does it get saved for inevitable raises? And then can you, if, if this kind of square footage were to then go forward, could you guarantee that it would stay the same or that you would have public input towards that being changed?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, Cindy?
Cindy Russell, five nine zero seven, Tricia Avenue. The February seventeen, twenty-twenty-five board meeting, where the fire fee was discussed as an alternative to a referendum, was not widely publicized. And the minutes show limited public input. Many residents, myself included, were unaware of this shift until recent media coverage brought it to light. Transparency requires more than board votes. It demands proactive communication with the community about significant financial decisions like a new fee. Many residents are wary of new fees in an era of rising costs. I urge the village board to pause the fire fee proposal and to hold public forums to explore all funding options and transparency. Public safety is non-negotiable, but so is fiscal responsibility. The village currently has ten full firefighters, full-time firefighters, and wishes to nearly double its staff to nineteen. Two of the primary functions of government are to provide police and fire protection. The fact that Weston needs to double the number of firefighters, firefighters show fiscal irresponsibility in the past. In comparing the sliding rate scale, example two, of the July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five Finance Committee, homeowners are paying eight times more per square foot than Wassa Supply Company. Therefore, giving the burden of the revenue needed to the homeowners. In all fairness to the homeowners, everyone should be paying their fair share. Public hearings should be held on the proposed fire fee rates. Residents deserve a voice in this process, not just a bail. Weston does not have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem. Spending money on cultural and recreation capital projects and future development projects for the next twenty years may be well-meaning. However, we should not be spending money in areas refunding for essential services such as fire and rescue are being neglected and kicked down the road until we have a crisis. Since the Wassa pilot published the board member Ermeling's intentions, one way or another, we're going to get her money. This statement tells the village residents that community input was and is not needed. If it is your objective to pass this fire fee resolution tonight, I'm proposing the following to be inserted in the resolution as amendment to a guarantee accountability of the board to secure other financing, fully finance the village's needed fire service in three years when the grant money is expanded. If we get it. In lieu of the referendum not being implemented, the amendment should, the amendment should read, "In lieu of the referendum not being implemented, and in all fairness to the residents, I'm proposing to the fire fee resolution that a sunset clause of three years on the fire fee be implemented to expire December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight." The residents at the informational meeting were informed that TID one and TID two will be closed in the next three years, which would mean the fire fee would not be needed. The revenue from both TIDS to the general fund would be sufficient to adequately fund Weston Fire Department. This would also provide necessary more accountability to the residents. Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Few more comments?
No, just follow.
Sure.
Don't forget to ask for those online.
Yep, okay, yep.
Andy Sullivan, sixty-five oh four, Sinzer. I didn't prepare remarks because I've talked to most of you in the last few days, and you surely know where I stand on this. But I do want to reiterate, my property tax last year went up seventeen percent. Uh, I'll echo the same complaints everybody else has here on that, that this referendum. I've, I've got a lot of different answers for why it. I've I've got a lot of different answers for why it didn't happen. I'll stop short of saying there's malfeasance there, but there still needs to be some accountability here. Somebody. Needs to do something. It's gotten even more than, I'm sorry, we screwed up. Maybe salaries have been forgotten for you guys or something. I don't know. Something genuine. Um. Hopefully our our pressure gets enough to do the right thing and go to referendum. I do have to correct Jim though. He said the last thing those many people were here was for Schofield Lab change. So I remember just when you guys were gonna shut down Green Acres Trailer Park. Enough people showed up and minds were changed there. Also, I believe at that same meeting, you guys did levy a cat tax, so thanks for your time.
Thanks, Andy. Any more comments? Any comments online? Anybody have their hand up?
No one came off mute.
Okay. One last time, any more comments?
Were there comments submitted to be read at this meeting?
What's that?
Were there comments submitted to be read at this meeting?
There was uh two comments this morning by Eric Lemron and Gail Marshall. We we no, they're all submitted into the record. We all got copied this morning and we all got copies here tonight. And I submitted them into the record. Okay. Um, just wanna reiterate that the finance and HR committee um cabled for one month. Uh, the decision uh that they're gonna, they wanna make. Uh, the chief then said that if the grant comes through or doesn't come through, if it comes through, we have fourteen days to respond. And we could certainly have a a committee meeting and a board meeting within that fourteen days. If that comes up before the first uh the next month for the HR and finance committee or this board meeting, so.
I I just three items to that. So one of the the three reasons why they also decided to delay until next month is we're just waiting for some questions. The first one is. The other municipalities that have implemented a fire fee have done it for the entirety of the cost of fire. We'd like to ask if. We can do it for a portion of that cost and supplement with levy? We were unsure on that question because those that have implemented have done it for the entire cost of fire. Again, it can only be used for the cost of fire. It could only be increased as much as the cost of fire protection would increase. But to that question that's been asked here tonight, could there be an annual limit that's placed on it? We'd also like to ask that question. Again, then it would still need to be supplemented by levy, but we want a final determination on what that levy reduction would be. We do have to take a levy reduction the year we would implement the fee and there's a a formula calculation for that. While that may not be a one-for-one dollar reduction depending on. How the other taxing entities would come forward this year or whether or not someone made an improvement on their home. Um, we do have to reduce our levy by a dollar amount in order to implement the fee because we're no longer levying for it. So if we did it as a a. Portion of the overall fee, we would be reducing levy, but still. Uh, you know, having to supplement with levy. That that could potentially be detrimental, right? So we may not want to do that. We'd have to ask those. We'd have to find out the answers to those questions.
Maybe you should do the same and wait for them to take complete those answers.
That would have been my recommendation. I'm I'm sure Louis would have brought that up too. Did you make a motion at HR?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I I just, I think we need to have uh the respect uh of our committees and commissions. And they've done quite a bit of work on this already, along with a lot of the input from the residents too. And um I I would, Rose, do the same thing.
I'll move for that.
Okay, so you're making a motion to move to move this agenda item to the next month. To the next meeting or whatever's first. Okay, all right. So a motion by Zagami, second by Hermaly. Uh, everyone understand? So any more on the discussion? Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. So we're gonna be moving this to the next board meeting. Un- unless we hear back on the safer grant that we'd have to meet quicker for the committee for HR and finance and the board of directors. You're absolutely all welcome and more to come back to the next meeting. And I think we need to get, if if we have meetings in in between there with this grant servicing, we need to get that out there usually. So that everyone understands, you know, what's happened, so.
So September fifteenth would be the next meeting.
Yep.
Um, the next regular board meeting. We do have a budget meeting in between that time. Um. I'm just gonna look up that date because.
I think we have two in between there.
If it works out that we would hear.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
So our our first budget meeting is is actually next week on the twenty-fifth. And that would be immediately following the Parks and Recs meeting. So if we would hear in between that time, we'd already have that one scheduled on the calendar.
All right, yeah.
All right, then that you schedule another one?
We if we had to, I mean, if we didn't hear about the grants until after that point, we we would but we would schedule a special, yes.
I would just ask that if we're going to possibly have to meet in a in a session and because of of the grant. That if staff, if it's possible to get the some of the answers as soon as possible, including alternative funding. And Jessica, you would be the one that would have to be doing, you know, what I suggested last year at last a last year. Would do it in a bigger amount to get us over the.
Okay. All right, so thirty-six is done. Um, as long as we have a crowd here, would you mind if we'd also move? Uh, let's see here. Let's see, number thirty-eight. Uh, why don't we make that decision in front of the crowd here? A discussion and or action on trustee vacancy pursuant to Wisconsin Stat seventeen point two-four for the term ending April twentieth. Two thousand and twenty-six vacated by trustee Wyland. So I'd like to get direction from the board on how we wanna handle that. Do we wanna handle that like we've done the last two? Uh, where we take interviews, uh, and then we interview those candidates. Right now, I believe we have one candidate.
We we do not have any candidates because we hadn't advertised until the board had the conversation.
We've had one person reach out.
We've had a person reach out with interest. Actually, we've had two people reach out with interest.
One one said no. The one I talked to.
Okay.
Okay, and then the other one, the other one has uh uh put in a application twice. Did receive votes both times what what was not elected. Uh, Joe Jordan was elected and Louis Lopes was the second one, so. Um, would you all wanna do that? Or we do an interview and application again for the next month?
You've already interviewed those people, um, yeah.
I I know, I know. We could actually appoint the one person we have. He did get votes. Um, but it's it's the board's decision.
Your other option would be to hold this battle until spring too. That's that would be your suggestion.
I would not be for that unless the unless the rest of the board would be for that to hold it open till spring. I I would like to have a seven-person board.
And I'm I'm remiss. You could also do a special, but there would be. A cost to that and the turnaround to get that on the ballot for the fall would be very would be very quick.
So what's your pleasure?
Well, this position.
No, all I was gonna say is I wouldn't be in favor of a direct appointment based off of previous applications because you've. People change their mind. I didn't apply for the position when Joe went for it because I wasn't in a place to do it at that time. When the next position became available, I found myself in a position to do it.
Okay.
So I think you never know who else is gonna be interested. You never know the conversations around this fire fee. Who might be like, it's time for me to get involved. So I think it would be wise of us to open it up to everybody.
That's a good point. Barb, same thing?
Yes, that was gonna be in the, they have to be aware, and this is just for until April.
Yep.
This one appointment because. That's when they need to run back if they wanted to, they would have to run again.
Okay, Steve?
I'll make a motion to go out um to accept applications for the vacant trustee position. Um, and for that to be placed on the number fifteenth agenda for interviews.
Motion by Cornyn to uh ask for applications and have that put on the September fifteenth of board trustee meeting. Second, and second by Jordan. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. So thirty-six and thirty-eight are done and thirty-nine. Uh, discussion and interaction on president's appointments to committees and or commissions. I would like to make one appointment. I'd like to appoint uh Joe Jordan to the oversight uh committee uh for the Mountain Bay Metro Police Department. Uh, for the time being, and then once we get the seventh seat, there might be some shuffling. Okay? You, what's your pleasure? Motion to approve by Hermley, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion?
Do we need, do we have a vacancy still on Parks? That needs to be.
Um, Parks, yes, we do. I'll take volunteer. We're gonna do some shifting there, yeah. Well, I mean, we'll it'll be for, I mean, we did the same thing. When your seat was open too. I know Jim took a couple spots and we moved some people around. So. If somebody wants to volunteer for Parks.
I I can sit on, if the board's okay with it, I can sit on Parks until we get a seventh member.
I'll amend my motion that uh Joe Jordan for oversight for Mountain Bay Metro and Louis for uh Parks, sitting in on Parks until we have our seventh member.
Okay, and just as.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, because on the, I was acting chair for the um. Probably the uh clips.
Yep.
And then who was was appointed to that? And I, he took over as the chair of that one. And now will he take over the?
You'll stay uh chair for Parks and he'll be vice chair.
Okay, well, I just I just wanted to be.
Just for the time, yeah, just for the time being.
Um, that should be included in the motion because um she's at vice chair right now.
Yep.
So that it would should be included in the motion.
Well, that's why I was I was trying to get that cleared up.
More up the speed, so she'll take chair and they won't take vice, okay?
Especially if I'm not gonna sit there.
So you had a you had an amendment to your motion. You need a second for that?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Second by, so now to vote on the amendment as presented. Uh, with uh Joe Jordan for oversight, uh Louis for vice chair of Parks and Barb to move from vice chair to chair on Parks. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Now on the original motion. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Thirty-nine is done. Now let's move back into rhythm here. Uh, acknowledge reports minutes from boards, committees and commissions. We've got seven B, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen tourism. What's your pleasure?
Motion to acknowledge. Second.
Motion to acknowledge by Cornyn, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Acknowledge reports from departments. Um, all at once or one at a time?
We do them one at a time.
Sure, um seventeen administrator. Anything you wanna add, Jamie?
I I did put some direct links uh in my report, including one to the. Trustees and committee members handbook and then to the employee handbook. I do keep those online on the website, so but those are just direct links. Just pointing out, they're good tools if you're looking at them.
And also to the cliff, um, you also commented about getting that done too.
Yes, yep. If you haven't done your strengths assessment. For our next um retreat, I still need strengths.
I tried.
Yep, we'll work on your.
Got my nineteen ninety.
We'll work on your assessment, not on your strengths. That sounded bad, I apologize.
Okay. Okay. Any more for the administrator? Okay, uh, you wanna just do all the ones at the end? Just go from one by one now or? Okay. Uh, eighteen clerks, Pam's not here. Any questions for Sarah?
Um, Pam did put in a nice piece in there about communications on those that are signed up for the the e-news, the newsflash, the urgent alerts. And um agendas. I thought that was just some interesting information.
Uh, nineteen finance, anything Jessica wants to add?
Nothing to add.
Anything for Jessica? No? Uh, twenty, fire and EMS.
Copy in there. If anybody has any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Thanks for the additional information today.
I have a quick.
Yeah.
Is there, was there anything that got brought up in comments tonight that you would like to to clear up since we still have quite a few of these folks out in the audience here? I know there was a comment about staffing, which I didn't think was completely with it. We're doubling our staff and that's not really true, so. I don't know if you wanna allude to a few of those things while we've while we've got all these folks here.
That would be the only thing is we we don't have ten firefighters currently. We have, as far as full-time staff from administrative all the way down through the ranks, we have twenty-seven. Um, so it's not doubling. We're adding, basically what that those nine would do is add three people per shift. The big goal is is in our station every mountain right now, there is zero fire coverage. So there's typically two people over there. Um, when those two people are out on an ambulance call, there's no fire coverage over in in that side of our district. Um, not to mention that we're district-wide, just well understaffed. Um, so. Correct, some of those numbers are not always accurate that are being portrayed, but.
Is there any way we can get the, somebody suggested if we hire outsider to take care of the ambulance service? Can we get the cost for that? See what's other community pay for?
I'm more than happy to do that, but this is this is the issue we're gonna have. So right now we have. Basically, seven and a half firefighters on per day because we have one person on for a twelve-hour shift. So if we were to go outside and hire a a private contracted ambulance service, which would more than likely cost the villages some money. I don't know how much, but they're going to charge you. So there'd be an additional cost there. We can't really cut any staff, so we would still have roughly seven to eight people, but now we're going to lose about one and a half million dollars in revenue. So the taxpayers are gonna have to make up that one point five million dollars because that's we collect an ambulance revenue. So that would be substant- that would be substantially more expensive if we were to hire a private ambulance service.
Well. And they can see that. I mean, I can see that. And I understand you lose that one and a half million. That add to that cost.
Correct, yeah. Instead of us, instead of us creating that revenue and bringing it in to offset the levy, the levy would have to be paid entirely by the taxpayers.
Explain also the fact that your firefighters are not just firefighters.
No, everybody we have is cross-trained, so everybody runs on the ambulance and on the fire apparatus. And and if the nine were to be hired, uh, they would also be cross-trained. Then we'd have to be divvying up the pay, the payroll. So every time there's a call for fire, we'd have to be watching and then uh EMS too, so that the funds could only be used for fire.
And the budget will be tracked that way. I mean, it's separated that way for twenty twenty-six.
Right. Okay, anymore for chief? Thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, twenty-one, Park and Recreation. No Sean, but did you see his item? Yeah, he reported, yeah.
Yep, yep, just if there are any questions.
Hearing none. Uh, twenty-two, planning development. Jen? Anything new?
Don't have anything additional. I did put synergies twenty twenty-five regional housing study that they completed with RPC. On just so that you guys are aware that it's there and if you wanna take a look at it and what they're recommending for the five county um region for affordable housing.
Any questions? Okay, twenty-three, police chief, anything to add?
Just a couple of comments. Um, so we had twenty-three uh hundred and seventy-three calls for the month. We continue to do bar checks uh with the Marathon County Health Department. So we did have seven violators in the last month, so we still open the bars and do bar checks and. Uh, I know it's a tough situation sometimes because people get tickets for that, but we're just trying to keep everybody honest. Uh, Halloween party coming up on October tenth and we started getting donations on that already, so it's a free event again and just wanna touch base on that, so.
That was a great event last year. Outstanding.
It's a hundred percent donation.
Yes.
Based, correct, yep.
Okay. Any questions?
A quick question. Um, chief, with the, so with your stats, um, you break down warnings and citations. Um, which I think is good information. I'm wondering if we could just have a column where it tracks traffic stop numbers by jurisdiction so that it's clear to people like. How much enforcement action has been taken in a certain community versus another.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you. All right. Uh, let's see, twenty-four, public works, Michael, anything to add?
Um, no, going on. Yeah, and then we added a, I guess, our tenth uh or replacement uh public works street employee. Uh, last week, we still have a vacancy on our utility staff as well as um looking for a engineering tech um to kind of fill that uh GIS uh. Uh, CAD role here and then um. Yeah, I guess, just a lot going on around the village.
Okay, yep, Steve?
Are the uh, is the Schofield app project and the forestry project on schedule?
Yeah, um, as long as weather holds out, uh, Schofield Ave is actually probably about two weeks ahead of where.
Oh, don't say that, don't say that, go say it.
I I caveat it with as long as the weather holds out. Um, so all the curbing is scheduled for the. I, I caveat it with as long as the weather holds out, um, so all the curbing is scheduled for the last week of August, so that should get done right before school starts.
Um, yeah, okay.
And um, yeah, Fuller, uh they started some curb work on the north half. Uh, today, um then they got rained out, so uh that Rogan to Ross section should get curbed and sidewalk. Probably for the next two weeks be done and so a, a good chunk of that one will be pretty much done.
Okay. Chief?
Um. How much, how many rain days is gonna get?
Uh, I guess we don't. Give them uh an allocation of rain days, we tell them you have to be done by this day, so if.
Or you can ask for increased the time of construction.
They, they can, yeah, um, the biggest one right now honestly for school, or for Weston Avenue is that uh.
The rock.
They hit rock, um, so they're looking to blast probably again later this week, so um. Kind of. Maybe about the halfway point between Hereon and Ryan, they hit about a six hundred foot section of rock where they. They can't get uh utilities through it again, so they spent last week really trying to. Uh, hammer through it and it. They, they really weren't making any production, so. The other projects, they really, I, I don't foresee any uh schedule issues unless we get a month of rain, but Weston Avenue is probably the one that might be coming back, the time issue with the rock.
If they fix the depression on, is John like?
Uh, not yet, that's on the. I guess it's on American Asphalt's radar, it's up to them to come back and repaint it.
American Asphalt?
Yeah.
Because they gotta excavate all that stuff, there's something wrong in there, gotta.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll work with Melvin, but kind of need to know when, when it can fit into American's schedule so they can get it uh. Then get the removals and uh kind of re, re, recompacted in the subgrade and everything there, so.
Yep. But, and also one more.
That's right.
Um. What about the sign at the intersection of the Camp Phillips and East Jelmac, right in, right out? Are those done or still in process or?
I'll have to look at that, I don't know.
Would you please?
I, 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 I thought.
We voted on it, you know, that's, that was unanimous vote.
Yeah, I think, but isn't that Camp Phillips, isn't that the county?
No.
That would not be the county.
No, because that's our road.
Yeah, I know, but, but you're on Camp Phillips and you can only go right. And when I'm coming uh south on Camp Phillips, I can't go left.
Right.
But that would then be the jurisdiction of Marathon County, because I thought that's what we're doing with the chief with the recommendation of taking the speed limit down too, that we've got to take their, our recommendation to the county. I thought that was the same thing with that, no. I, I, how could it not be?
Because his, his Jelmac is our road, we can direct the traffic the way we want.
Well, you're restricting Camp Phillips, okay, uh Steve?
Just a quick point of order, I just, we talked about this last month and it was. Did it not go back to Public Works, did it not make it back on the agenda there?
Sorry, I, I thought I was gonna go to Cliffs, I might have missed that. But I can make sure it goes to Public Works next month.
Well, you might, you might want to take it to Cliffs too. Yeah. Okay.
If he has to go, but we can talk to county, ask the county. Let's see if that's their jurisdiction.
Okay. All right, uh, Public Works, uh twenty-five Technology, Nate, anything more?
Nothing to add very far.
Anything for Nate? No? All right, now looking for acknowledgement. Motion to acknowledge from Hermeling seventeen through twenty-five?
Yes.
For a second?
Second.
Second by Louis. Uh, to acknowledge, um, any more on the, the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Um, I noticed someone in the audience and I apologize, uh but uh number thirty-five, I see Nick from Harders. Why don't we just grab you here if you don't mind as a board, if we just move thirty-five up? So. Discussion and our action on an agreement for the collection, transportation and disposal of residential solid waste. And recyclable material with Harders Fox Valley Disposal LLC for a term of January first two thousand twenty-six through December thirty-first two thousand thirty-two. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zagami? Second, second by Jordan, anything on discussion?
Could we just let the residents know what the difference was between the cost?
I'll just work through the bullet points if that's.
Okay, yeah, if you could, so they understand why we're making the change.
Yep, so our agreement with Waste Management ends at the end of this year, so we took out a request for proposal, an RFP. And uh we received back two bidders, that was Waste Management and Harders. Um, Harders' cost was. Less going forward for the seven years, but it is an increase to where we were, just because it's, it's been seven years since we've. Put out that RFP, we had a, we had a seven-year agreement with Waste Management. So the contract that's in the packet tonight was reviewed by Attorney Edie, um that was one of the requests with the original motion that it would be reviewed by the attorney and it has been. The other request is that the annual increases would be a. Add CPI for garbage and trash collection, not to exceed five percent, but there was a, a want, a desire for a minimum and the supplement does have. A minimum of, of three percent, but no, not to exceed five percent. But if CPI was at four point five, then it would be four point five for trash garbage collection. So it wouldn't go below three, but couldn't increase for more than five for the next seven years, this would be a seven-year agreement. Um, so. Nick is here for any questions that, that we would have for Harders. Uh, we will all get new containers, which will be delivered in early December. Uh, we will likely start to get new containers before old containers are taken. Uh, we will do some communication with the public not to fill both containers because they, they both won't be emptied, but then. Uh, when Waste Management comes through, uh after that last pickup, then those containers will be collected. And collection routes will stay the same, if your garbage day is Tuesday, it will continue to be Tuesday after the new year. Uh, but the collection center will go to their facility in Ringel, so spring and fall item, um bulk item drop-off does move to the facility in Ringel. But we do gain the option that if you have extra recyclables, um now if you have extra garbage, you can come here and get the two dollars sticker and you put it on your bags. That will apply for recyclables going forward too, you could have that done, picked up from your home, or you could go to the facility in Ringel. So, um, we do have to just talk through a budget where we want to have final numbers because. Refuge and recycling is not just our garbage agreement, it's also our pickup for brush, um and our Ryan Street site. So um, we do not, right now we are at one sixty-seven annually, that is not increased for seven years. Um, we, it will not go over two-ten, but I think we just want to have that conversation um through budget where we end up, it'll probably be someplace between two hundred and two-ten. Annually, so it's like a thirty-three to forty-three dollar increase per year.
And Waste Management would have been more.
Waste Management would have been more.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Those are the only two.
Three hundred thousand dollars more.
Yes.
And is there a, an escalation for gas costs?
There is, and we um. Now going forward, that will be done monthly, that's part of the agreement on the last page. Um, after it goes over four dollars a gallon, then we have that fuel escalator, but with Harders, that will be evaluated monthly. Before that was evaluated annually, so sometimes we would get that hit at the end of the year and then we'd have it for the whole year. Now it will be evaluated monthly, so if there's a decrease, we see that right away, if there's an increase, we can budget for that within that month, we can accommodate that.
Okay, but I mean, we budget for. Um, this on a yearly, because it goes on the tax roll.
It goes on the tax roll, but we, we do evaluate it annually if we need to make an increase to it.
The, excuse me.
Yeah.
The contract. Was, I thought it was lower three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Over the seven-year term, there is that savings, yes.
Okay.
One of the big reasons there's that savings is we don't pay the tonnage for the bulk item drop-off any longer. That isn't, that's encompassed as part of the agreement.
Still, we have that service.
But still, we have the same service.
It'll be at Ringel.
It will be at Ringel.
Any more questions? What colors are the containers? What?
Blue.
And recycled?
Also blue with a green lid.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, black.
We have blue, green, blue, okay.
I have one quick question, is there, I just out of curiosity for the spring and fall bulk item drop-off, is there a reason that we can't have that here?
I think we want to try to have it at the Ringel site, just because they have the ability to accommodate that, they have the dumpsters, they have the way that vehicles ingress and egress. Um, and they are able to have the staff out there. I think we should try it out there before we bring in the dumpsters here and we don't know the capacity, we have garbage sitting on the ground, we have garbage on the grass, I think we want to try and see if. Just because it's, that's what it's set up as, is a transfer site, we are not established as a transfer.
Possibly we'd be touching it twice.
Yes.
If I come in here.
And then get it put on the ground and then we have to put it into the containers, the containers are. Mar up the blacktop, then we have to fix the blacktop, I mean, it's just, th- their facility is set up for that purpose.
I understand, I just, Q, Q in Schofield Ave.
Yeah, I just thought, I mean, for me, it's not that far of a drive, but I know, you know, we, we do have a lot of residents here that that may be a little bit of a, a problem for, so that's why I asked.
Okay. All right, and no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, moving back to twenty-six Works Product Gentlemen's, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, separately or together? Uh, acknowledged July building permits, acknowledged July code enforcement report, acknowledged July budget status. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Motion to approve twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, acknowledged by Hermeling. Is there a second acknowledgement, second acknowledgement by Jordan, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um. Opposed, so carried, sorry about that. Uh, consent agenda, twenty-nine. Approve vouchers, check numbers, uh, and the new non-reserved class B intoxicating liquor license for Maske LLC DBA doing business as Time and Seller. For the twenty-five, twenty-six licensing term.
Motion to approve items thirty and thirty-one.
Motion to approve crock by Cronin thirty and thirty-one. Second by Jordan, any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Ordinances, thirty-three, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one one. An ordinance to amend provisions within chapter ninety-four of the municipal code affecting accessory structures, yard definitions and land use classifications and allowances. What's your pleasure? Move to approve by Zagami? Second, second by Jordan. Anything on, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Resolutions number thirty-four, discussion and or action on resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one three. Designating officials authorized to declare official intent under reimbursement bond regulations.
And move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one three.
Motion by Loeb Searle. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Hermeling? You're, you're closer to me, I heard you first. So we have a motion and a second, anything, uh, any further on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, thirty-five we've got finished, uh thirty-six we've got moved on to the next month. Let's see, thirty-seven Discussion and or Action on a Report from Mountain Bay Metro Police Department Regarding a Recommendation for Speed Reduction. On Camp Phillips Road Between Schofield Avenue and Highway twenty-nine Interchange to Marathon County.
Mitch, you want to come up to the table?
So after the last meeting, uh we talked about speed limit on Camp Phillips Road. So you can have a seat if you want, there.
Stand.
Yeah.
Um, so what we did was we ended up taking officers and put them out on Camp Phillips Road at different various times and locations and. Mitch is gonna do a report on here and some of the things that have occurred during his reporting, so.
So, so what we did to get some accurate speed numbers, we took it on marked pickup truck. Um, sat at a few different locations along Camp Phillips, various out, programs on. Um, one thing we noticed is majority of the cars are going between thirty-one miles an hour and forty. Um, so in doing that, just driving through that area. Me and a few other officers realized, I, I think there's more of a signage issue. On this stretch of roadway between Camp Phillips and twenty-nine. So. The, the three speed limit, there's three speed limit signs from the start of twenty-nine and they end just south of Barbican. So anyone that lives on the east side there that's coming from Barbican going north, any of those side streets, they turn north, they never see a speed limit sign. Um, same with when you're coming south, there's one right just south of Schofield Ave, but there's Winding Ridge Way. Western Pines Lane, there's a ton of apartments back there, and if they're turning south, they never see a speed limit sign until they get to twenty-nine. So I, I feel like there's a bit of an issue with how the sign, the sign placing. Um, and another thing we noted is, is if you're eastbound twenty-nine and you're gonna go northbound on Camp Phillips. That there's not a speed limit sign for the traffic turning northbound onto Camp Phillips till you get past the westbound. But, so. I, I feel like it's more of a sign issue in that. You know? With that area.
I just want to add one more thing, so if you're coming southbound from Weston Avenue, the same thing, you have thirty-five miles an hour. You don't see a thirty until you get across State Highway twenty-nine, there's nothing in there that says. Speed reduction ahead or reduce speed ahead or anything like that, so. I, I agree and we talked about speed in there and I think the first thing we really need to address is the signage that's in there. How many citations or how many vehicles did you stop on it?
Uh, I don't have the numbers stopped, I mean, we did, I did stop some and issued citations to the higher speeding vehicles during this. Um, I don't have the number of cars that we stopped. You know, some of this is in the morning during the rush hour, there, there's a lot of traffic. And at times, even if you have somebody speeding, it's almost impossible to even get out after them with the amount of traffic, but. Again, I think it's more of a signage issue.
Uh, you know, the chief, you said that right away and I, I drive that a lot, a tremendous amount. And I, I noticed that and I guess I just assumed that there was signage there and there's not. But I did notice the squads. And because I, I didn't understand what was happening ahead of me with all the red lights, you know, all the brake lights coming on. So then once I saw the, and I saw the truck several times, but I saw a couple squad cars too.
Yeah, so they hasn't been sitting there a little bit more too, and.
Right. Yeah.
And we, we've had two crashes here recently, one was at the intersection of Barbican. And that was a fatality. And the other one was right here in front of the school, I know that's outside of our zone, but that's a twenty-five mile an hour, that was a high-speed crash there. That was an actual barrel roll, we have it on camera from the school and. Lucky that wasn't a fatality or there wasn't another vehicle involved at that and that is marked at twenty-five miles an hour in that zone. So even in, if we reduce the speed, we do have crashes like that that occur, but I think we really have a signage issue and getting back to the question. You can make that intersection a left, no left turn, that would be up to you as the village to do that because it's your roadway in there, but. Only caution, the only caution I have on there is people are very, very good with jumping parking lots to get back out to the roadway. So there's an apartment complex there, so we have that in other areas where they'll jump into the parking lot, come out of the parking lot and make a left turn. And you increase the traffic in different areas when you do that, and I'm not against any changes, but I'm just saying that. If you make one change or put a sign up, you've got to make sure that you don't have another escape route that people are gonna use and now we have a lot of complaints on that or crashes.
Chief, do we have an accident report at that intersection?
Um, I can pull the numbers on that intersection from East Jelmac and Camp Phillips.
Maybe that helps us out.
But right now, as far as I remember, I don't remember us having any crashes there, but I'll pull the numbers for, for us.
Thank you.
Our crashes on Camp Phillips are limited for the most part, except for some of these higher speed crashes that are occurring, but. This one here, there was alcohol and or drugs on board at the time of the crash, so. Those are difficult because it's just not speeding, it's a bunch of other.
So I flipped over to the tree, but it's cool?
Yeah, barrel roll through the front, front yard of the school, so. I don't know if that, that, you know, that answers some of the questions in there and. If there's more questions the board has on this area, we're, I mean, we'll do whatever we can to get the answers for them, so.
Okay, Barb?
Well, like you said, I travel that quite often, Camp Phillips, and I find. That the traffic moves pretty fast when it's, people are going to work. Otherwise, I, I've, the traffic is pretty, speed-wise is pretty decent on that road, I, I was really paying attention just because. And where I found that they, they're speeding a little bit more is when you're going down the hill. Because you're, it's, you know, almost impossible to keep it at the, the thirty mile an hour, but you know, it, I was actually surprised how. Few really. Over the speed limit that there was on there when, like I said, I, I just drive it and I keep it pretty much at the thirty, thirty-three, to be honest with you.
Coming in, co, going north, it's a little slower, going to the highway, that's where they're trying to pick up speed, especially to, to grab that light at East Everest Light.
I feel like the southbound traffic does have to speed faster, um, if, if I'm recalling right. Um, if if I'm recalling right, I think all our stops were people that were cell phoned.
Yeah. And I think the school zone with the yellow flashing lights when the school's on, I think that really helps that whole area down there.
But like I said, you can't.
Oh, you're right.
Protect from that one person.
Right, yep. Shane?
See, we all, as a driver, they tell us, if you go five miles over the speed limit, police doesn't stop you. So we put a sign in there thirty miles per hour, everybody goes thirty-five, because we got five miles. Extra in there, so if you put thirty-five, it's forty miles per hour. So I think that's another issue in there. That's what you see, that the speed is thirty-five, thirty-six, because that's what, I believe that's what I was told, you go thirty-five miles, police doesn't stop.
Uh, one more point on the signage part of this.
I shouldn't admit it.
Uh, we also noticed that at the traffic signals, there's, as soon as it goes to a green light after the turn arrow comes through, there's no red turn arrow on those.
I saw that.
And that's kinda confusing to drivers too, because there's a jog in that roadway up there, and when you're coming southbound, when the arrow goes away. It's just a green light, and if you're not paying attention, you can make that turn really, really quick, and we have a bunch of lights that are like that, and. I don't know how that was designed like that, but a lot of lights have red in them, so you have a red arrow, knowing that you can't turn or flashing yellow. This one goes away, and I didn't believe that after the last crash, so. And quick comment, if we stopped every car at five over, we'd have enough time in our day, cuz it's just, it's just crazy, it's it's crazy, so.
All right.
I don't know if that helps out, and if there's more reports besides crash data on those intersections, I'm good with that, but. Somewhere we need to get this to a point where signage.
Signage is an important issue, yeah, I agree. Well, who would that come from? Would that come from Public Works or come from Police Department?
Um, I think it would come from the village, so I think that would have to go through clips or the board.
Well, if the board wanted to make a recommendation tonight, that a letter would go to the county requesting more signage, I think that would be appropriate, given the agenda item. And then we would work on a letter, maybe we could do it jointly with the PD.
And we'll we'll be more than willing to meet with them after we get to that point.
I move to direct staff to drop the letter to the county asking for increased speed limit signage on Camp Phillips between Schofield Ave and.
Motion by Cronin?
Second.
Second by Zagami?
Also, you had a gentleman here who was asking to drop the speed to twenty-five miles per hour.
I don't think he would maybe be doing.
Yes, he's lives right in the corner.
Then then he's living on that road and he's asked for it, so.
Right, the only thing would be, it would help as far as people getting in and out of their driveways. I think, I keep, every time I go through there, I think, boy, I wouldn't wanna try to get out of my driveway.
Yeah, he says it's it's noisy too and stuff, yeah, okay.
Well, could we do that?
Mm-hmm.
Requested. A twenty-five and additional signage.
I wouldn't be fifth. Okay, my 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 motion was.
Just signage, no signage. Start with signage, signage first, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so any more discussion? Hearing none, that's motion by Cronin and second by Zagami. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
I don't think the officer's finished with this part.
Oh, you you wanna talk more?
Oh, I I was, I guess one more thing I could add is.
Yeah.
Just with the signage, um, when you're turning south onto Camp Phillips from Ross. Um, there's not a twenty-five sign immediately, it's actually north of Ross. So any cars turning north from Ross aren't catching a twenty-five sign in the, by the school there until they get up a a block or two, so.
Okay.
Kinda right where that fifteen mile an hour sign is.
So all they're seeing is the school sign, you have the schools in action.
Yeah, you know, if they're coming in off that, they start speeding up right away and then slow down once they get to the first.
What's the speed limit, uh, right here, thirty or thirty-five?
So it's actually thirty-five, but the sign, the thirty-five sign doesn't even hit till way back here.
Right.
Um, technically, there should be a thirty-five sign just in the north of Ross Ave, but, uh. You know, that's, I don't know if there used to be one, or even in that thirty, there looks like there was a post where maybe there was a sign at one time, but there's, it's just a. Post with nothing on it in front of, on the west side of the road.
Okay. Yeah. All right, cool, thank you very much for your work on that. All right, so we are now moving to forty, I believe, am I on track on forty? Forty, discussion and or action on Weston Avenue CRX to CRJ, construction change order number three. Moved to approve by Zagami?
Second.
Second by Jordan, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Forty-one, discussion and or action on residential cross-connection inspection contract.
That's for three years contract and they were doing this work before. So I'll move to approve, because I don't think the staff has time to do it, and these guys have done it for a long time.
A motion by Zagami to approve, second, second by Jordan, any more in the discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So is this something that can be done by us?
It it can be.
I I, no, I understand what you're saying, I I was just asking if it was or not.
Yeah, it is.
How much time does that typically take?
Uh, I mean, in in the house, it's probably about fifteen minutes or so, um, inside every house, and then, you know, it's coordinating the schedules for, you know. When somebody can be home to let you in and, um, go through all that, so.
I've dealt with them two times, one for business and for one for my house. And he called ahead of time, then you come and inspect the house, then you gotta show them where the water is coming to the house and. The sink, what you have in there, then you make a decision, you need it or not. And for the business, usually if you have the mop sink, definitely he's gonna.
Right.
Who who is the, the contractor's with?
Uh, Hydro Corp.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I I'm just asking, I know in the past there's been some conversation, for example, the the engineering, the engineering's, um, services that we get. And that's part of the reason that we hired an engineer recently, was to try to reduce those costs, so when we see things like this, I I tend to think, well, okay. You know, is is there a way that we can do this in-house? You know, with through, whether it's increasing staff or not, you know, if it if it, if you hire someone and it's gonna cost us less to pay them to do this. I guess that's what I, that's what I was getting at.
And this isn't, uh, you know, the cross-connection has to be done, I believe it's every ten years. So in this three-year span, they'll take care of whoever's not in compliance, um, and then as we go through our meter change outs again. Um, that were done in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, um, those are roughly twenty-year meters. So we'll be starting to look at getting through those, so as part of that mass meter change out, anybody who had that taken care of. Um, they were, they went through the cross-connection, so it's the, really the residential properties that we started changing out prior to that with our staff. Where, uh, we need to go back and start taking care of those, or any new houses, um, like in Hinner Springs, some of those, just to. Formally document that, yes, there was a cross-connection done on those, now that people are living in them.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? No? Okay. So, uh, it's a five to one approval. Louis voted no. Attorney referrals, any attorney referrals? Administrative referrals? Remarks from trustees, Louis? Don't? Well, Steve?
Um, I don't have any.
Shane?
No.
Barb?
No, I was gonna comment, oh, I think you said, I might quote, but they forgot to put in the information. That went with that statement, so, but other than that, it's used to.
Right, um, on on my remarks, I appreciate everyone's calm and, uh, listening. Um, you know, it's, we serve the residents, we serve this village. Uh, it sometimes doesn't feel like it, especially to a lot, but I believe I do, and I think this board does too. And, uh, this is definitely a a learning, uh, point, and, uh, we'll see what brings us next month. So, thank you all very much. Uh, future items, uh, next meeting dates, Monday, Aug- August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, immediately following Park and Rec. Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five at four PM, Monday, September fifteenth is our next board meeting at six PM. Monday, September twenty-second, immediately following Park and Rec. Monday, October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting following clips, and Monday, October twentieth, at twenty-five at six PM, that's our regularly scheduled board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion to adjourn is appreciated. So moved by Ermerly?
Second.
Second by Cronin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, adjourned at seven thirty-four.